Seven twenty twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, twenty twenty five. And as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on July fourth, twenty twenty five. And on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on July fourth, twenty twenty five and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento?
Present.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Albertson?
Here.
Land?
Here.
Rios?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Mr. Vandermark?
Here.
Alright. Uh, before we move on to item number three on the agenda, I just want to take a moment to recap about uh what transpired over the Fourth of July weekend. Um, so as power has now been fully restored across the borough from what we understand from PSC and G, correct, Mr. Miller? Okay, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the storm that hit our area on the evening of July third. Uh, the storm caused significant damage, downed trees, power outages, displaced families, and left approximately twenty-two hundred residents without electricity on the first night. That was Denellen alone, I believe it was upward of over forty thousand in the region. Um, in true spirit of Denellen, our community came together like it always has with neighbors checking on neighbors and family and friends supporting one another. I'd like to thank our Office of Emergency Management led by our OEM Coordinator Homer Mosley, our Fire Department led by Chief Bill Scott, you're usually over there, our Police Department led by Chief Smith, Rescue Squad led by Chief Best, and the Department of Public Words Works led by Rich Herkert and Alex Miller for their incredible efforts. They all worked around the clock to keep our residents safe, provide timely updates, and begin the cleanup process throughout the town immediately. I also want to thank PSC and G for getting crews out to Denellen quickly to start restoring power. I'm grateful to our partnership with the Denellen School District, which opened up the Denellen High School Cafeteria as a shelter for our residents in need basically immediately. Um, I extend thanks to the Governor for checking in on us, Senator John Bramnik for offering his support as well, and to Assemblywoman Michelle Matsakutas for her continued outreach. To our residents, I thank you for your patience, strength, and unwavering support of one another. There is still work to be done over the next couple of weeks to clean up storm debris and repair damages, but I have no doubt that we will all move forward together. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to remember the three individuals in the Namering towns who tragically lost their lives as a result of our storm. Our hearts and prayers go out to their families and friends in the communities during this difficult time, so let's just have a moment of silence for them. And also our crossing guard Victoria, who passed away over the weekend too, not related to the storm though. Okay, thank you. Item number three on the agenda is Presentations. We have two this evening. First up is the Fourth Round Fair Share Housing Plan. And we have Dan from DMR Architects. I believe he's joining us virtually.
Yeah, uh, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Dan.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. So um, I'm going to uh give a disclaimer before this presentation. So uh, Dan Halbin, uh, the Affordable Housing Planner for Denellen. Uh, I prepared this plan as an employee of DMR Architects. As of today, I'm actually with T and M Associates. Um, the, due to this transition, uh, we don't have a updated uh presentation, um, but uh, the material is still pertinent to tonight's meeting. So you uh may all be aware that on uh June twenty-third, uh, the date on this uh presentation cover, the uh Denellen Planning Board adopted the Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that I'm discussing tonight. And uh typically what comes next after the Planning Board adopts is that the uh governing body of the municipality is supposed to take certain actions that show a commitment to implementing the Affordable Housing Plan. Uh, and that includes uh adopting a resolution endorsing the housing plan, a resolution approving a spending plan, which I will explain uh further down the line, and a resolution committing to uh funding uh any portions of the spending of the Affordable Housing Plan that cannot be covered by Affordable Housing Trust Funds. So uh, uh, please go to the next slide. So a little bit of history for everybody. Affordable housing has been the law in New Jersey since nineteen seventy-five, when the New Jersey Supreme Court decided in a case called Mount Laurel One uh that every uh municipality in the state has a constitutional obligation to create an opportunity for affordable housing and to accommodate the growth necessary uh to provide for affordable housing, uh regardless of whether the town is big, small, uh, growing uh slowly, quickly. Um, in, in nineteen eighty-five, the state legislature passed the Fair Housing Act, which uh codified the Supreme Court's decision and it created a body called COA. They were responsible for uh making the rules of and enforcing the rules for determining how to uh, how many affordable housing units every town had to create um and how those units could be created. And uh, the act created a mechanism to uh penalize towns who that did not comply with the Fair Housing Act uh with something called exclusionary zoning or builder's remedy. Uh, and that uh is, is that if a town does not comply with the rules uh in the Fair Housing Act, rules established by COA at that time, um, a builder could uh bring a town to court, tell a judge, hey, this town is not providing their fair share of affordable housing. Allow me to uh exceed um within the uh, the confines of the state law. Uh, the zoning that is on uh, the, the zoning that is in place on these properties that I have some sort of control over. So that means that uh if a town did not uh comply with the Fair Housing Act, prepare uh the plans uh and uh take the actions necessary to meet their constitutional obligation. A developer could uh, uh, just as an example, develop a multifamily uh building or a large project in a single-family neighborhood where uh you would normally want, not want that kind of thing. Um, so uh, the, the, the borough has uh prepared uh fair housing, uh fair share plans in the past in twenty uh, okay, well, this presentation was never updated. Uh, in twenty sixteen, you um entered into a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. Uh, and what that uh, with that uh settlement did is it's established how many housing units you had to create. And uh, you would meet those uh, that obligation at the uh, the, the project that's now called The Nell. And uh, through the updating of the um redevelopment plan in the downtown to make sure that any redevelopment in the downtown that created housing included affordable housing. And so uh, these affordable housing um uh plans and rules basically operate on ten-year cycles. So the last cycle uh technically started in twenty fifteen, which is why we are now again having to uh deal with affordable housing. Please go to the next slide. So uh, like I mentioned, COA used to make the rules and enforce the rules. They failed at doing so for uh about fifteen years between nineteen ninety-nine and twenty fourteen. In twenty fifteen, the courts took over. And uh, in twenty twenty-four, the state legislature took action to uh, to replace COA and create a new system for uh, uh complying with affordable housing. So uh, the governor signed a bill last March twenty, uh twentieth, twenty twenty-four, uh, creating a new set of rules for the creation of affordable housing and uh preparation of affordable housing plans. And one of the requirements of that rule was that every town had to adopt a plan to meet their affordable housing number by June thirtieth, which you did by adopting uh your planning board, rather, adopting a housing plan on June twenty-third. Um, any redevelopment plans or ordinances necessary to implement those plans have to be adopted by March fifteenth of twenty twenty-six. So one of the uh requirements in that ruling uh of uh, or that, that bill that was signed in uh twenty twenty-four was that uh, the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, the DCA, uh was tasked with determining or estimating how much affordable housing every town would have to create um based on a longstanding formula. And for Denellen, uh, this, the state determined that you're for, you had to create uh a realistic opportunity for twenty-three affordable housing units to be created by twenty thirty-five. Um, and it also required you to provide a funding um uh, a, a funding uh source and a program to rehabilitate existing substandard homes in Denellen that are occupied by income-qualified, low and moderate-income households uh up to seventy-nine units. So it's not that you have to re uh, uh, make sure that seventy-nine units are rehabilitated, but you would have had to fund uh the rehabilitation uh, uh, fun, have enough funding for rehabilitation of seventy-nine units. Please go to the next slide. Now luckily, uh, the rules have mechanisms for towns to reduce those obligations. Uh, in a town like Denellen, which is largely built out, this is particularly helpful. Uh, so there's something called a vacant land adjustment. And what that vacant land adjustment uh is, is we do an analysis of how much actual uh vacant land is in Denellen and vacant being defined as uh undeveloped and um unused. And to uh make an assessment based on a certain uh, 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 rules and constraints as to how much affordable housing a property could accommodate. So there was only one property that we identified in our analysis, and that was the uh, the one thirty South Second uh Street um redevelopment site uh that is uh, was designated as an area in need of redevelopment uh last year or the year before. Uh, we determined that that would accommodate uh up to six affordable housing units. Now, um, there's another piece of the legislation that has been subject to a lot of debate, debate and uh numerous interpretations. And that piece is a, a section of language that says that any town that gets a vacant land adjustment has to um create a plan that provides for uh, uh, the, or that provides mechanisms for creating a number of units equal to twenty-five percent of um the adjusted perspective need, and nobody really knows what adjusted perspective need means. Um, but uh, what we've done is we've prepared a plan that um would satisfy the most extreme versions of that interpretation, which is uh, the assumption that twenty, that the adjusted perspective need is this thing that has historically been called the unmet need, which is uh, the prospective need assigned by the state minus the uh number of units that we determined you could create through the vacant land adjustment, which is called the Realistic Development Potential, RDP. Uh, and that would be five units. So rather than having to plan for twenty-three affordable units, we have to plan for eleven units, which is six units from the vacant land adjustment plus five, not eleven, plus five uh units uh from that twenty-five percent rule. So uh, uh, plan for eleven units, not twenty-three. We also um were able to do a structural condition survey in which your uh construction official was able to drive around town and take a visual survey of how many dwellings in town actually uh are in substandard condition based on exterior um uh, uh, assessment. So that was done in March, and we were able to bring down the uh rehabilitation obligation down from seventy-nine units calculated for, by the state down to twenty-one units. So that means that the, the borough only has to uh ensure the funding of re, uh, enough to funding to rehabilitate twenty-one units in town that are existing substandard condition occupied by income-qualified persons. Uh, next slide, please. So how do you create affordable housing? So the way that uh Denellen has been creating affordable housing is through inclusionary development. And what that means is that anytime anybody um does a redevelopment in the downtown, uh, they have to provide fifteen, uh, a, a, a certain number of units have to be affordable. So if their uh units are rental, which they typically are, it's fifteen percent of those units have to be affordable. If they're for sale, um, then twenty percent have to be affordable. Other options to uh provide uh or create affordable housing is to support group homes uh like uh the uh ARC uh or United Way that provides special uh or, or housing for people with special needs. Um, if a municipality has uh available land or excess funds, they could use that land and funds to um uh create housing uh where instead of doing the inclusionary formula, where just fifteen to twenty percent of the housing in a project uh is affordable, you could provide land or money to make sure that there, there's one property where all of the units are affordable. Um, that is uh challenging to do in most communities. Um, most communities don't have the funds to do that. There is uh up to twenty-five percent of your, the vacant land adjusted number, so six units of the twenty-five percent of that can be met with what are called bonus credits. What that really means is that um, uh, certain number of the affordable housing units in your plan can be counted twice. So uh, if you break that down of the six units that you have to create uh through the vacant land adjustment, you only really have to, have to create five affordable units. One of them is this bonus credit uh where one of those five units is counted twice. Um, the rehabilitation program that you have to operate is funded typically from development fees. You just have to have, ensure that a pool of money is available uh that a uh qualified homeowner or a renter can um uh, apply to the program that the town operates uh and that the funding will be available to fulfill their application to rehabilitate their, their housing. Um, the uh typical amount for uh per unit for a rehabilitation program is twenty-five thousand. That's normally what you need to actually have a, an, a functional program. Um, so, and as I mentioned, uh, you don't have to seek out those households. You just have to make sure that they could find the information to apply to the program. Uh, next slide, please. So this map shows you where we are satisfying that eleven affordable housing units. And, and just remember, the eleven is made up of the six units that we determined could be created um from one thirty South Second, which if you're hopefully not colorblind, is that red um property on this map. And the remaining uh five units of that eleven uh, a unit requirement is being satisfied by a continuation of the enforcement of the downtown redevelopment area, um, which has uh, if it was to be fully built out, it has sufficient capacity to meet, to continue to meet your third round affordable housing obligation and your fourth round, and may continue to be uh helpful and useful to you in the fifth round. Uh, depending on what your fifth round number may be, which in the fifth round, of course, would start in twenty thirty-five, because I'm, as I mentioned, they've run in ten-year cycles. Um, next slide, please. There's other uh pieces of the um housing plan that um uh, we had to create. So there's, we have to have a assessment of the demographic and economic conditions in town and use available data for, to project um employment and population changes over the next ten years. Um, with a compliance plan as, which uh, uh, just as I described, it's, it's, you have to identify the number of units that uh we're required, was, we're required to uh provide eleven units and we're, how we're gonna meet them. We're meeting them in the um downtown redevelopment area and the one thirty South Second Street redevelopment plan area. We have to demonstrate that the plan is compliant with state, the state redevelopment plan uh as well as with the regional sewer um service plan. Um, and then uh, there's another uh, uh, piece of the plan that uh, is anybody able to tell me for sure that we have the copy of this? Because it sounds like there, there may be an issue with um whether we have the spending plan available for me to project. I don't know who's, who's um projecting this right now, but if you're able to pull up the spending plan, just let me know.
Dan, Billy only has the presentation that's on the screen now.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Um, so uh, alright, well, that's, okay, we'll have to figure that out. So um, so I, I shared the spending plan uh prior to leaving DMR. Um, uh, I'm sorry that it's not on the uh, 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 available to, I, I, can, can, can anybody tell me if the, the council members received copies? So at least I know if you uh, uh, have had the opportunity to review it. I also can't see you guys if you're gesturing with your.
I had the presentation. They were provided whatever was sent over to Lauren via, I believe, DMR Architects.
Okay, alright, so um, uh, uh, we may not be able to act on the spending plan tonight, but what I'll, here's what I'm gonna tell you about the spending plan. So the spending plan is a document that we're, that uh every town's required to uh, to uh adopt or approve. Um, it's approved by the, the governing body. And what it uh does is it states that um, the, the municipality expects to receive a certain amount of revenue into its Affordable Housing Trust Fund uh over the next ten years um and that it will uh spend that funding accordingly to implement the housing plan and to meet certain other requirements. So um, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is uh typically funded by development fees. Those are fees that are collected whenever uh a new um uh dwelling or a new uh mixed-use or commercial building is uh constructed. And those funds that are specifically deposited into your Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be used for affordable housing purposes. So your spending plan projected a certain amount of uh revenue over the next ten years based on certain assumptions. And uh, it uh stated that you would um allocate funds uh as necessary for what's called affordability assistance, and that is something that is required uh by the state. You're required to set aside. Currently, I think the rate is thirty percent, but I think that might be changed at some point. Thirty percent of every dollar you've ever taken in has to be reserved for this affordability assistance. And that's the program that is usually something like security deposit assistance or down payment assistance for somebody moving into an affordable unit. Um, just to make sure that they have the ability to at least get their foot in the door for that affordable unit. Um, because people may not have the cash lying around to, to um, to pay a security deposit, for example. Um, and the rest of your funds can either be spent on creating affordable housing, uh, funding your, your rehabilitation program, or um, uh, uh administrative costs, meaning my, my fees or uh your affordable housing attorney's fees, others, others uh fees that are involved in affordable housing process. And so what your spending plan uh said is you will comply with the affordability assistance requirement and that you also have enough funding to fund a portion of um your rehabilitation program. I think we, the number that we came out to is you could potentially fund up to uh eighteen of the twenty-one units um that are required uh in your plan for you to have a funding to rehabilitate. And uh, and here's where the resolution of intent to fund comes in. And that's a resolution that states that uh, should there be a shortfall in Affordable Housing Trust Fund balances, that you will use other means to fund your affordable housing obligation. So uh, should you have the eighteen, the funding for eighteen uh, uh, to rehabilitate eighteen dwellings and a nineteenth person comes in and you don't have money in your Affordable Housing Trust Fund uh to fund it, you will have to find some other source of funding to rehabilitate that unit. Um, you can direct them to the county's program, because the county uh currently at least operates a uh affordable housing rehabilitation program. Uh, but um, um, uh, but uh, i- if, if that program is threatened by, for example, federal uh funding changes, because the counties tend to rely on CDBG grants from the, the federal government, then you would um need to use something like uh, uh, one of the state's programs or you may need to bond and then pay yourself back later if, if possible through a collection of um development fees. So um, that's the uh, the, the spending plan. Uh, uh, and unfortunately, I'm sorry that you guys don't have it. I, I, since I'm no longer with DMR, I don't have it on me either. I thought that um, uh, you had all had it. Uh, any ordinances or redevelopment plans that need to be adopted um to implement the plan? And we're really talking about the one thirty South Second Street um redevelopment plan. Um, that would have to be adopted by March of twenty twenty-six. Um, and resolutions executing the plan, that's uh really just uh the uh, the resolution of intent to fund and your resolution endorsing the plan. Uh, you can go to the next slide now. Okay, so we've adopted the uh, the uh housing plan on June twenty-third. Tonight we'll be uh endorsing the plan. Uh, hopefully um, we'll be able to do some of these other resolutions. So uh, within forty-eight hours of the adoption of the plan, you were, you're the, the, uh, your attorney was required to and successfully did submit your plan to the state. So um, we are uh, we're uh done in that respect. Um, a developer had, or an interested party has a, a two-month window to challenge your plan, um, which uh ends on August thirty-first. And that challenge can only be successful if it is success, successfully able to uh show that your plan doesn't meet your obligation, which um, I, I think we very well do. Um, and I don't think that that'll be an issue. That it's, in the past, it was a lot easier for developers to just say, I have a site, you should have included my site in your plan. I, I don't think that that's gonna be the same uh world that we live in this time. And uh, just for general knowledge, your affordable housing, uh, after affordable housing is built over the next ten years, um, uh, uh, you have an administrative agent, you, you have a contract with a group called CGPNH, and they're uh very uh good at what they do. They make sure that uh the people going into the affordable housing in town are actually qualified to do so. Um, and to make sure that the money going between the town and um, uh, the project is, is uh done so appropriately. Um, any development uh in the plan, and we're really just talking about one thirty South Second Street, uh, has to, uh, just because it's in the plan doesn't mean they could dig, start digging right now. It means that they still need a redevelopment plan from the town. Uh, that uh, then they still need to provide a plan that complies with the redevelopment um plan. They need to come to the planning board for uh review and uh, and comment as they, any other applicant would. Um, so uh, that's the good news that just because something's in your plan doesn't mean it's gonna be, you know, uh, built tomorrow. Um, I think the next slide is just opening up to questions uh and, and comments, so why don't we uh just go to that? Thank you. And uh, I'll open it up.
We'll open the floor to council first to ask Mr. Halbin any questions pertaining to the presentation. Mr. Halbin, I would ask, there's a document on our website that we had to do clearly for transparency and compliance purposes.
Yeah.
Borough of Denellen Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Housing. Um, would that have the spending plan in it?
I, you know, let me, let me take a, let me take a look. I think it, I don't know that it would, because we had to send it separately. Uh, so uh, it may be that there was uh, something, I, I don't know, let me see here. Yeah, no, it doesn't look like it.
Okay, so we'll leave the council to the floor to ask Dan uh questions pertaining to the presentation that he's just made. Uh, Dan, is there a deadline for submission of the spending plan?
No, um, I, I, uh, you know, it's um, there's not, uh, it's uh, historically you try to do it uh as close to the adoption of the plan as possible. Um, the rules, the fourth round rules and the, the guidance that came from the, the uh courts on timing for everything were a little sloppy and uh it's been a little bit unclear about what's exactly expected. But uh, I, I think that. Unclear about what's exactly expected, but uh, I I think that it's, you know, a lot of towns are doing, are are adopting them later. I think it's. You know.
Okay, so for purposes of this evening's meeting, we meet our obligation should council move forward. And then the spending plan can present it on August seventh council meeting.
That's right. Yeah, I think I think that that's fine. I think that that's appropriate. I want to make sure everybody sees what the plan is before it gets.
So we'll track down on where that miscommunication was between DMR and in your transition to T N. Um, but we'll get our hands on it and it'll be dispersed appropriately publicly presented. So thank you, Dan. Uh, council, any questions for Dan? Uh, councilwoman.
Yes, I do have a question about um the vacant lands or vacant lots, as you had mentioned. Um, so are we, are we meeting our affordable housing um criteria, I guess, um. In our downtown redevelopment area, or are we looking at other vacant lots throughout the town?
No, so um, all of our affordable housing obligation can be met from the one thirty South Second Street uh site, should it be redeveloped. Um, or should a redevelopment plan be uh adopted and then it subsequently redeveloped? And then the uh balance is i- uh, this five units um uh. Uh, additional that um you, we are, we're, the plan addresses. Uh, is being met through the downtown and just us for a little bit of context on that five units. So and it historically, when a town got a vacant land adjustment. There is a very open-ended requirement that uh a town had to provide. A town had to make sure that the the number that came out of the vacant land adjustment, so in our case, six units. Had to be uh created within the ten-year um housing plan cycle. And then anything excess of that. Uh, meaning the difference between in our case, three units uh signed from the state and the six units that we got out of the uh vacant land analysis. Uh, had to be accounted for through passive uh means, meaning um. Uh, it could, uh, usually meaning overlay zoning where you uh you uh. Uh, if a commercial use, for example, or industrial use no longer serves its industrial or commercial purpose, then the zoning. The overlay zoning would kick in and require uh uh multifamily with affordable housing. Now, in the past, unfortunately, that uh unmet need was enforced unevenly across towns where some towns had to. Zone for every unit of that unmet need. So in our case, it would have been seven, twenty-three minus six, we would have had to plan for. Every uh seventeen, twenty-three minus six or seventeen, you would have had to plan for all seventeen units, but. Uh, so some towns would have had to do all seventeen, other towns would just kind of be like, you know, do what you can. Uh, and the new rules made it uh a uniform rule that said you just have to plan for at least twenty-five percent of that gap, so the twenty-five percent of. Uh, the seventeen, which uh, and you round up is uh uh five. So, so um, that's sort of the long way of explaining that this uh. And continued enforcement of the downtown redevelopment plan is sort of our form of the um. The overlay zoning, the the passive form of zoning that should somebody in the downtown want to redevelop their property. Obviously, they can continue to do so and they will uh provide affordable housing units toward. Um, that that will probably be over the course of the next ten years in excess of five units, just based on the success of uh the downtown so far. Uh, that was a a very long way to answer your question. Did it answer it uh satisfactorily?
Yes, it makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, I I would note that um, the obligations that we've been able to meet and what we have to meet in the new and the fourth round. Um, I think we're in a good position to keep where we're developing these projects in the redevelopment zone and inclusive of affordable housing. Maintains where dense living should be around transit and in the downtown versus some towns are having the conversation of how do you knock out forestry? How do you do more layovers in a single-family uh zoning? Uh, Dunellen, we're keeping it where it makes most sense in the downtown, where it makes sense for people to be living and shopping in a more dense. Population and respecting that we have neighbors that uh neighborhoods that have single zoning. And maybe duplex zoning like a two-family, and we're respecting that in those zonings. So I think um for us as a municipality, for our small town quaint charm. This respects that. And um, so. Thank you to DMR for the efforts and the team that the at McManam in Scotland and Ba- am I pronouncing every name that's in there? MSNBC. Uh, to getting us to this point where we're keeping it within our redevelopment zone, because um. I think we'd be having an entirely different conversation if we were sprawling out to single-family zoning. I would definitely be up in opposition to that. So um, I think this is a good plan. Um, council, any other questions before we hand this out over to the public? Okay, we'll open the floor to the public to ask any questions to Mr. Halbin. We just asked that you please state your name and address. Well, Dan, I think you did a a pretty good presentation, so thank you. Um. If there's no further comments from the public that are either in chambers or online, we're going to close that portion. Okay, without hearing any, we're closing the portion of this presentation, and I know there's subsequent resolutions on this agenda uh related to this. So. Um, Mr. Halbin, thank you. I just ask if you could stay online just in case as we get to the resolutions, any additional questions come up throughout the process?
Certainly, thank you.
Okay, item number two on the agenda is our sewer utility conversation for the evening. Uh, this presentation will be done by McManam in Scotland Embowman. It was right in front of me, as I said too earlier, I didn't even look down. I'm happy. And uh NW Financial, so I'm actually going to come out to the audience on this one. So. Welcome to the floor, Francie. Uh, Dan Mar- Marionello from NW Financial, and they'll introduce themselves. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Francie McManam in McManam in Scotland Embowman. We serve as special. Oh, I don't actually need this yet, but thank you. We serve as special counsel to the borough in connection with a potential sale of the borough's. Water uh, oh, excuse me, wastewater system. So the borough started this exploratory process back in March with the presentation. Uh, providing an overview of the process of a potential sale of the borough's wastewater system. That was followed by action in April that the Borough Council took. Authorizing the issuance of a request for bids under the Public Utilities Law for the sale of a potential sale of the wastewater system. Uh, on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, uh, the request for bids was issued. As required by the Public Utilities Law, it was published, notice of the request for bids was published for six consecutive weeks. On June sixth, uh, twenty twenty-five, the uh bit, one bid was received in connection or in response to the request for bids. So that's just a very brief overview of the process that's brought us to this evening. I'm going to now turn it over to the NW team. To um provide some more detail on the process.
All right, good. Yeah. Thank you, Francie. Uh, Dan Maronello from NW Financial Group. Good evening, everyone. Um, so we were brought on to um both assist with the process of going through. The um, the sale process, um, and then also with looking at the results of the sale and making recommendations. So I'm going to go through. Just a real brief overview of Dunellen system itself. Um, a couple of major points up there. It's eighty-seven thousand feet of sewer mains, three hundred and thirty-five manholes. Three pump stations, not a, not a big system in the world of municipal sewer systems, but certainly. Obviously, uh, as important as it gets for Dunellen. Um, with three major pump stations, as mentioned. The system is managed currently. We obviously own the system, the 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 borough owns it. Parsa Plainfield Area Regional Sewerage Authority has managed the system for us. Um, um, along with helping to to process the sewage to get through to the Middlesex County Utilities Authority, which is where the. Wastewater gets treated. Um, the system manages, you know, over a hundred and sixty million gallons of sewage uh in a year. And just to set the stage, the the current rate, as you can see on the screen, is three hundred and sixty-five dollars a year. Uh, for a single family, multifamily and other residential's are per units within those buildings. And then the non-residential commercial is four dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand gallons, which is also have a minimum of three hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's the current rate structure. I know that it has increased slightly over the last year or so. Um, that's where it is today. Why, why requesting bids for the sewer system? I know back in March, there was a presentation by staff to discuss why we were going out there. There's, there's. These four potential um bullet points on the screen are typically why towns go out to to look at um. Selling the sewer systems or water systems for that matter. Aging infrastructure is a big one. Obviously, everyone can relate to that. Um, any system such as this with pipes as old as they are are going to have significant capital improvements. Those capital improvements are very expensive. When looking at trying to manage the cost of those capital improvements, just within the small community, it gets expensive. Um, so the goal, one of the goals looking to sell the system would be to allow those capital improvements to be spread across a much larger. User base, which is what the owners or potential buyers would be able to do. Um, potential financial benefits, obviously a big reason to go out and look for um potential sale and partners on this. And what you would do by pro- the process of selling a system requires you to take the proceeds of the sale and use those proceeds to pay off debt. First have to pay off the debt within the sewer utility, of which there's about two million. Um, and then the remaining amount would go to pay off any general obligation debt, other debt that the borough has within its general fund. Um, rate stability, um, obviously another big reason, trying our best to keep rates. At an affordable level for um the residents in Dunellen, but at the same time, understanding that. Costs of operating this system and everything is rising, but especially within the sewer structure. Um, most of these things, to give you an example, even just buying equipment. To, you know, purchasing of equipment in one system that has, you know, twenty thousand residents in its community. Is a lot easier to accept than a community that has, you know, eight or nine thousand. So. The impact is is uh much more expensive in smaller systems. And then long-term risk mitigation, any potential environmental or financial risk that may come up. It's always, you always look to see if there's an opportunity to um. To push, you know, to push those, those risks over to a private entity that does this all the time. Fortunately, here we don't have. Uh, any real environmental risks that we've been dealing with. So that that piece of it is not as important as really as the financial. Um, ramifications on it. Then the bid came in, as mentioned by uh, by Francie, we received one bid. That's important, obviously, when you're looking to. Um, sell a system, you know, in a competitive process, you hope to have more than one bid. Competition breeds uh better pricing. Uh, we received one bid. Um, New Jersey American Water. Many might be familiar with New Jersey American Water, since they run the water system here in Dunellen. And in many other uh communities. Um, just to put a couple of the bullet points that were included in their bid about the number of uh communities that they service. And obviously have, and they they understand Dunellen very well, of course, since they've been here in the water system. The bid itself had three main components among many others, but the real important ones are listed above. Purchase price of five point five million dollars. It included spending two point five million in capital improvements over the fi- first five years. I mean, that's important as we had identified some things that we felt needed to get done, and so they committed to putting that kind of capital improvement in. Um, however, there are many more capital improvements that will need to get done. Um, this was just part of the bid that they, that they um. Submitted to us. And the bid, then when it came in, it's, you have to accept the bid as it comes in. It's not a negotiation. So there's not an opportunity to go back to them. And try to work with the price or change the capital improvements or change the rate structures. Their bid is their bid, and you either have to accept it or reject it. Um, included in their bid was a seven-year straight rate structure. Ten percent increase in year one, zero, and then three percent out through year seven. Modest increases, um. Um, however, they they certainly do impact the price that they, that they um. Provided to us, and we'll get into rates in a later date, but it's important to know that that's the bid, and it was either an acceptance or rejection of that structure. Um, I keep hitting the wrong button. Um, so just a real quick on the rates, you know, three hundred and sixty-five dollars is a low rate. I know everyone has a different, you know, uh. Opinion of whether or not it's low or high. Everyone's incomes are different. One of the ways that in the sewer utility that you look upon whether or not. The cost of sewer um is an appropriate one, too high, too low. One of the ways that people look at it is. The percentage of the median income within the community. Um, in Dunellen, we call it the bill to income ratio. If the median household income is eighty-four thousand. And your sewer rate is three hundred and sixty-five dollars a year, you're at zero point four three percent. Of your income going towards your sewer bills. New Jersey American Water provided within their bid, just so that we have it as a baseline. The majority of their customers are at about zero point seven four percent of income to sewer bills. That can get much higher than that, as we've seen in other communities. It just so happens that that happens to be New Jersey Americans average. But there are many communities where that is much higher. We wanted to share with you a few of the uh other communities um and their rate structures. So Dunellen, as I mentioned, three sixty-five. South Plainfield's four hundred a year. Manville, which was recently sold, is at a two hundred and twenty-dollar residential flat fee. And a usage charge of four dollars and three cents per thousand gallons. So if you're looking at that, it's the three hundred and sixty-five in Dunellen versus the four hundred and ninety-eight. In their bill in Manville. Down Brook, when you use their residential flat fee of sixty-two dollars. Plus the residential usage charge of six dollars and fifty-nine cents, you get an average estimated bill of about five hundred and sixteen dollars. There is a residential unmetered, there are some unmetered residences in Down Brook, and they got a flat fee of four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Somerville's ordinance is a flat fee of three hundred and eighty-four dollars. In addition to the flat fee, you have to, you have to pay a user charge of three dollars and forty-seven cents per thousand gallons. And a purchased wastewater charge of five dollars and twenty-one cents. Um, with, which is related to the treatment of the sewer. So their combined um annual bill is nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. Every, I will tell you, you know, and even trying to come up with real comparative analyses on what other communities charge in sewer versus Dunellen. It's not an easy thing to really come out with. Every town does it very differently. Um, there's one town we're working in right now where there is no separate bill for sewer. It's just in your taxes. The cost of the sewer system is an appropriation in your budget. And then it gets charged in your tax bill. So you're really paying as a percentage of your assessment, not based on your usage. So there really is a, is a number of different ways that communities bill sewer. Obviously, if you have sewer billed based on your water usage. Um, it really levels the playing field with that you're, you're being charged for what you're using. Um. In Dunellen, just to give you an example, your flat fee of three hundred and sixty-five dollars a year. Is equivalent to four dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand gallons. Up to, I think it's eighty-nine thousand gallons a year in usage, which is slightly higher than the average person. The average person. In today's world uses about sixty-nine thousand gallons of water a year. So if you wanted to take uh any of these rates, six dollars and fifty-nine cents, for example, in Down Brook. In your own home, the typical home is about sixty-nine thousand gallons a year. Um, and that's the, that's the gallon, that's the usage that we use to estimate these bills. Um, just in summary, again. We looking at it financially, but really in its entirety, the net impact on the sale, on the, of the sale to the budget in Dunellen. Was generally limited. I, and I say that because the five point five million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but it needs to be used to pay off debt. And when you pay off debt, it's not as if you're getting a five point five million dollar injection into your general budget. You're paying off debt, which then decreases your, your budget expenses. Going forward as you would have paid off debt, right? Your debt service is an annual line item in your budget. By using the five point five million to pay off debt, you're reducing that debt service number annually. Um, so it's not a a true one-to-one in that sense. So we really looked at it as to what is that impact on an annual basis to the borough? And it wasn't, in our opinion, it wasn't as strong as we would have liked it to have been. You know, the sewer utility. Uh, in addition to paying for all of the sewer costs that you have within the system. There's obviously shared costs that the sewer utility takes on. There's obviously shared costs that the sewer utility takes on. Staffing and other costs within the Dunellen General Fund that are on, that are within the sewer utility. Your CFO and other, other staffing that gets shared. Once you sell the utility, those shared costs are no longer shared and they come back into your general fund. So any costs that are like that go to offset the savings you would have had. By lowering your debt service. And that was really the financial analysis we did. The sewer rates and the rates that were projected by New Jersey American, the truth is that the sewer rates are going to. They're going up in that, in their projection because they're doing the work, because they're looking to make a profit. And so they're looking to increase rates in order to get to that point. The goal of this system is, is not necessarily profit, it's to make it work and be safe. And be there as a reliance of a system for years to come. So capital improvements. Is enormous in, in what's going to end up being the results of whatever rates. The Dunellen is going to end up charging for its customers, but it's something that's going to have to be reviewed. Ongoing operating and treatment costs are also increasing. The Millsix County Utilities Authority manages your wastewater treatment and each year their costs are going up. So it's a system where in Dunellen, as I mentioned with your three hundred and sixty-five dollars, it's a really low rate. And, and the borough has kept rates in the sewer system low for a long time. And what you're starting to now see is because of the cost increases. Because of capital improvements that are going to have to happen, there is going to have to be a review. Of the rate structure that you have within the borough in order to make sure that you are going to be able to treat. And manage the sewer going forward. Whether or not that was with a sale or not with a sale was the determination, was the review that we did. Along with the rest of the project team, which included, you know, your consultants and staff. It was to reject the bid. Review the rate structure that we have currently to see and determine what it might, might, it might be to, to take this on ourselves. The system has been managed and run very well by Parsa. And the, the future capital improvements are going to have to be done. So we're going to go back and look and review those, that rate structure. It was good to go through the analysis though, because it definitely gave us a chance to see what the market is for the system. I will say that it, it may or may not be as true a market number as you would think because we only got one bid. It would be nice to see more of them come in. There are more than one buyers of municipal systems out there. So. But it was good to see what they felt was the value of it and where they thought rates would need to go. But in the end, it was the recommendation of the team to reject the bid and now go back and review the structure ourselves. So I'd be happy to take on any questions. You have any?
Yes, I have one question. I don't know if you can answer this, but. Do you have any ideas of why we only had one bid was, is that typical? What do you think the reason?
Well, I can answer it if you want. I mean, it's more of a legal question. I'm not sure why we didn't get. There's at least three bidders out there. One chose not to bid at all. We did not hear from them at all. Another one, Violia, which is, is formerly Suez and United Water. They sent the letter in and determined that they chose not to bid. They felt that the bid parameters were such that. Was either too stringent or they felt that the Board of Public Utilities was not going to allow them to stick to that rate structure. We felt that they misread the bid in that way. Of course, the BPU has ultimate say on where rates need to go. Did I say that right, Francie? I don't want to step on the lawyer's toes, but that's exactly, I mean, so they sent the letter in and said they wouldn't be bidding for those reasons.
Two questions. One, the rates in which American Water proposed the ten, zero, three, 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 and then?
What was that?
Ten, zero, and then five years of three percent.
That necessarily doesn't have to hold true. They can still increase beyond that, right? That's the understanding, or they have to stick to those percentages?
They would have to stick through those percentages unless the BPU determined otherwise. You still have to go based on the BPU's determination, which they review each year and approve rate increases.
Okay, so they could still feasibly bring those, that three percent year over to them and say, we really need a ten percent BPU can approve it?
I believe so.
Okay. At any given point, if we, if, if council decides that we want to continue maintaining ours and we go through the analysis. And let's say, within the next five years, we do significant improvements, does that increase the value of our system to then consider going out to bid and hopefully other? Other entities bid on it?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, any investment. And, and I'm sure we're going to determine that there, there are real capital improvements that need to get done. So once you look at that, you will be increasing the value of the asset.
So I guess the argument could be is that we could always go back to analysis and see if we need to rebid, if that is the option. Any other council members have questions or statements to legal counsel or our financial analyst? Analyst? Okay, we'll open the floor to the public for any questions. We just ask that you please state your name and address strictly to this item on the agenda.
Bob Snyder, Executive Director for Plainfield Area Regional Sewer Authority. Just to go a little bit further into your question about capital improvements into the system. You have to keep in mind that, yes, it will raise the value of your system, but not so much in their eyes. Any of these private equity or private investment firms that are purchasing the systems. Are purchasing the systems because they're eligible by BPU standard to make between seven and nine percent return on their investment. Capital investment and they can recoup the purchase price. So overall, while you might think that would be beneficial in, in, you know, in thinking about it, hey, we're making it worth more. At the end of the day. It's not to the, to the public or to the residents, if you will. I will commend the professionals for, for keeping an open mind throughout this process. And I will just say that Parsa remains steadfast in providing the best. And most technology and, and everything that we can for the residents of Dunellen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder, and we appreciate the relationship and partnership we have with Parsa. We do appreciate it. And. So, you know, any other members of the public have any comments or questions? Please state your name and address.
Homer Mosley, one thirteen Pearl Place in Dunellen. I'd say a couple of things. You did address some of them in terms of, you know, possibly caps on the rate increase. Because as a New Jersey Water, as a public utility, is subject to New Jersey. What about other, other, other private bidders? Are they subject to the same?
Yes, I believe we are too, based upon the BPU.
The other thing I thought about too was. This whole concept of having the sewer bills incorporated, I think we had, I had this discussion once before. Incorporated into our tax bill because there, then it becomes a deduction. As part of real estate taxes as opposed to, you know, being separate. So, you know, that's something I thought about.
Well, we can address that question. Our CFO is here and he's been here for many years. At once upon a time was within our, our municipal budget. When Governor Christie did the two percent cap, budgets were hemorrhaging and the decision was made to create a sewer utility in which this, this. Fee was created or taxed, if some people want to call it too. To take it outside of the municipal budget, otherwise there would have to have been other decisions made in terms of personnel. Other capital improvements we would have to be making on like roads and other projects. So it once was, but I think once it's out, it's the best that it's, personally, policy-wise would be staying out because then you're. Look around the room on who we're letting go on other quality services in the municipality.
And I guess one of my other concerns is that I know what the objective is to pay down debt. I have some concern in terms of paying down debt over here, increasing debt over there. So I think that's something that really needs to be monitored. In other words, if by paying, using this, let's say if we went through. This exercise and actually decided to accept a bid from someplace to pay down debt, capital debt. I, I would be, I would hope that the, the council would be very mindful in terms of not paying down over here, only to. Increase that somewhere, somewhere else.
Fully understand that point, Mr. Mosley.
And then again, as a, as a senior. As a senior.
Not a senior, you're my age, I thought.
I wish, but anyway, you know, I'm always concerned about, you know, the, the seniors who are. Who's, a lot of them are on fixed income and so therefore, any, any increase, no matter where, is that. Hits pretty heavily upon the senior population. That's it.
Understood. And I believe in our current ordinance under sewer utility, I believe there is a freeze at some point for seniors. In which with American Water, had we gone, that was one of the other variables we considered was. The only people, the seniors that are within that program currently would qualify anybody aging into that population that would have prior, previously qualified would no longer qualify. So you would get the increase regardless. Sorry, Dan, did I steal your thunder? Okay. Okay. Any other members of the public? I saw Mr. Best standing up.
I've got a fast four one minutes. If I move to get the numbers correctly. It looks like they were, New Jersey American Water, you put about a two thousand five hundred dollar. Bestment went to the town per residence. Per residential. So the question would be how they then recruit this amount of money? But the purchase price then capital improvement. We were to do it ourselves, same amount of money into a capital improvement, you know, possibly one thousand dollars per residential. At some point, this full profit business is going to attempt to recruit costs. Even if we cap their rates that they can increase for seven years. You end up seven years, something else to that. So while I can see the benefits of selling the similar system, I, I have a question whether a full profit business is going to end up. Being better for the.
Thank you, Mr. Best. Any other members of the public pertaining to this item only on the agenda, whether in chambers or online, please state your name and address. Okay, without hearing any, we will close that portion for discussion and we have. Yes, we do need to take action. So we have two options for this evening. One is an introduction of an ordinance. That I believe Francie has in play, in place, and that ordinance would be to. Accept moving forward to a referendum. To place on the November ballot and let the residents of Dunellen choose. Or there's a resolution to reject the bid. And maintain the sewer utility as we currently stand, knowing that we would be moving forward to subsequent months of doing an analysis. If you were to ask me, I would do the resolution in rejecting the bid and maintaining the sewer utility. So those are our two options. Do we have the resolution number and the ordinance number?
Ordinance number would be twenty, twenty-five dash seventeen. And then the resolution number we could add for two seventy-six.
Can I do that now on the floor?
Yeah, I would have to amend the agenda to. Add that specific.
Okay, so let's do it this way. Is there a motion in a second to reject the bid? And to maintain the sewer utility? Under Resolution two seventy-six?
Move it.
I heard Albertson, I think. And let's do a roll call? Okay, and then let's take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson? Lance?
Yes.
For Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you to the team. We look forward to the future presentation. Hopefully we can hit the ground running sooner rather than later. So council can get their heads around that and the public has the opportunity to see that presentation. So I think based upon approving that resolution to reject the bids, we no longer have to consider the introduction because we effectively rejected it. So. Who will kindly notify American Water if we have to? Thank you. Thank you. Always best from the legal team. Get home safe, everyone. Okay. Okay, I was debating a recess, but let's just chug along, right? Okay. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes, our regular meeting of June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Are there any comments, additions or redactions to the meeting minutes as they currently stand? Without hearing any, can we take a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vandermark, Councilman? He's unmuted. Okay, so.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, we have item number five, the introduction of ordinances. This evening we have twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. Councilman, is that you? Councilman Vandermark?
What's that?
Can, can you give us the vote to the floor on the approval of our meeting minutes on June sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have your vote. Twenty twenty-five dash fifteen and twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. This evening, we do have Sandy Glacial, one of our redevelopment council. Legal counsel on the line. So as we go each one, you can kind of brief counsel on them. And then at the August seventh. Meeting, there'll be a more of a, a more substance presentation because for those who. Are new in the audience this evening, happy to see you all. I've not, it's some unfamiliar faces. Introduction of ordinances is just that, it's an introduction, there's no discussion, maybe. Somebody will briefly discuss it, just so it's summarized. And then it goes to a roll call, whether council wants to introduce it or not. If it is roll called and voted yes for an introduction, then at the next meeting, within a ten-day period. It is publicly heard and possibly adopted if not amended and then reintroduced, et cetera. There's a process. But in between the introduction and the public hearing, which in this case for these two, if they're moving forward tonight would be August seventh. You can pick up these ordinances at the clerk's office or find them online for your review. Okay? So with that, can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, an ordinance approving a five-year tax exemption for a new multi-dwelling rental project to be constructed by Chelsea Builders LLC. At four forty North Avenue pursuant to the five-year tax exemption and baitment law in chapter one fifteen B of the Dunellen Municipal Code.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Sandy, if you're lying tonight, do you, well, you are online. Can you briefly just brief counsel on this?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. This is the introduction of an ordinance granting. A five-year tax exemption for that property. That tax exemption allows the redeveloper to finance the property when. There may be a shortfall, when there's a shortfall. The redeveloper submitted an application that was reviewed by the administration and its professionals. And the recommendation was to grant the, the tax exemption. And over the five-year life of the exemption, the taxes gradually increase year to year. According to a graduated schedule that is in the financial agreement that was included in the package. So there'll be a hearing on this at the, the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Glacial. With that, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark?
Yes.
Okay, camera motion on twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, an ordinance to approve a long-term exemption. And financial agreement between the borough of Dunellen and four four one North Urban Renewal LLC.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mr. Glacial, would you like to brief counsel on this one?
Yes, Mayor, this is. Yes, Mayor, this is a, a similar, uh, application for a tax exemption for a property in the redevelopment area at four thirty-one, four thirty-five, and four forty-one North Avenue. Uh, but it's being granted under a different, uh, law. The long-term tax exemption law, which is associated with, uh, properties in the redevelopment area. It's for a longer, uh, term, thirty years, from the finishing of, uh, construction, or thirty-five years from the entry into the financial agreement with the, uh, with the applicant. Um, uh, similarly, uh, this provides for a, uh, what's called an annual service charge payment to the borough instead of a, uh, instead of regular taxes. Uh, and that is calculated using a formula based on the, uh, annual gross revenue that the project generates each year. Uh, and that also, uh, increases over time until the end of the exemption period. Uh, again, uh, this, uh, there will be a full hearing with a presentation at the second reading of this, this ordinance at the, at the next meeting. Uh, and there is a resolution later on the agenda related to this project, which, uh, amends the redevelopment agreement with the existing redeveloper, uh, to allow transfer to, uh, it's called an urban renewal entity, which is, uh, the type of entity that, uh, must be formed by the redeveloper in order to enter into this tax exemption, and to provide for a community benefit payment by the redeveloper to the borough of seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, that's also on the agenda tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Glacial. So roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Councilman Vandermark? Okay, well, passes with those who are able to vote correct, moving forward. Okay, so as noted, both ordinances will be at the clerk's office and on the website for your review. So on the August seventh meeting, after the presentation, we'll have the opportunity to ask.
I got disconnected.
Hello, councilman, what, uh?
I got disconnected.
Okay, we're happy you're connected. We, we appreciate being connected to you. So, twenty twenty-five sixteen, did you hear sufficient, uh, information from Mr. Glacial?
Yes.
Okay, so that voted yes. Thank you. That was your vote, yes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So as noted, August seventh, there will be a presentation in which public has an opportunity to address, uh, both items to our legal counsel and our financial team as well as mayor counsel. Okay. Item number six is resolutions. This evening, we have resolutions two sixty-one through two seventy-five, and I'm gonna ask that our municipal clerk, Mrs. Warren Stats, uh, read them out, giving us the opportunity to discuss them if there needs to be discussion. Thank you.
Resolution two sixty-one is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two sixty-two is to amend resolution from June second, twenty twenty-five, number two thirty-three, to hire summer camp staff for the Dunellen Recreation Department.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number two sixty-three is to hire summer tennis coaches for the Dunellen Recreation Department.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two sixty-four is to approve a grant submission for the Second Street Improvements Phase Three Project.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two sixty-five is to approve a grant submission for the New Market Road Improvements Project.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
I do apologize, I let the, uh, to, uh, sixty-four get ahead of me. Um, but, uh, so these were the grants that we were discussing based upon the NJDOT municipal aid, transit, village, safe routes to transit. Um, uh, when conversation would see me, I'll go back to two sixty-four really quick, I apologize. Um, there, the recommendation and why it's on the resolution this evening is because we've gotten a grant for phase one, which is Madison to Schwartz. Phase two is Madison to Washington, and then phase three would be Washington to, uh, Jefferson, so then in effect, one entire street would have been done through grants, I think. And it completes one street. Um, then now back on two sixty-five, um, reviewing, uh, some studies we've done, things that the mayor's traffic and pedestrian safety task force has worked on within, like, the NJTPA and recommendations. Um, the New Market Road Improvement Project, uh, Mr. Miller, correct me if I'm wrong, that basically fixes the sidewalks and finalizes a sidewalk system on some areas that don't have sidewalks. Okay, so that's what this grant is for, so in effect, accomplishing, uh, one of the plans that we have in place from one of the reports that were generated through studies that we've conducted, so that's why they're recommending this. The ones that they've recommended this evening are the ones they feel that are strongest suit and actually getting funding. So, that's two sixty-five, I apologize that. I let Second Street Phase Three get past me.
Okay, I'll take a roll for two sixty-five. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two sixty-six is to approve a grant submission for the Madison Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and Jackson Avenue Lighting Improvements Project.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
So, much like the decorative lighting we've had throughout the downtown, and the ones that received grant wise to complete all of Route twenty-eight, um, it's recommended that, and why we're moving it forward, to complete some of this side streets that shoot off in our redevelopment district that would, or like the entryway into our downtown, in effect, helping complete the overall decorative lighting. Um, so I think part of the process of doing some of these grants is just to make sure we complete some of the projects that we've kind of over time started, so that's why this one's being put forward.
Okay, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two sixty-seven is to appoint Jaden Caraballo as a junior member of the fire department. Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
I'm staying to my position.
Mr. Scott?
I'm staying in position of the fire department.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Okay, well, thank you to junior member Caraballo, uh, for stepping up to the plate and volunteering. Uh, as we always note, our community is built on the backbones of volunteers, and that's how a lot of things get done in this community. We congratulate them, we thank them, we encourage more people to step up to the plate to volunteer for one of our many agencies, whether through municipal commissions, the fire company, rescue squad, OEM certs, uh, we welcome volunteers and we encourage people, so thank you, uh, Jaden, for stepping up to the plate.
Did you hear Mr. Vandermark's vote, or no? Did he say?
I thought he voted yes. No.
Mr. Vandermark, resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution two sixty-eight is appointing crossing guards for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Just for the record, Mr. Miller, Mr. Olson, this includes a crossing guard for Madison and Dunellen. We're adding one at that intersection. Okay, thank you. The mayor's traffic and pedestrian safety task force should be very happy.
Uh, sorry. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark. Mr. Vandermark?
Okay, moving on.
I got disconnected again.
Was that a yet, Mr., yes, Mr. Vandermark?
Yeah, I just, yes.
Okay.
Resolution two sixty-nine is endorsing the borough's fourth round fair share housing element plan.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Rios, um, is this inclusive of the spending plan? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two seventy is to approve a sidewalk cafe license for De Lucas Cafe.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-one is approving a third amendment to the redevelopment agreement binding between the Borough of Dunellen and eight seven, eighteen seventy-nine Morris Associates LLC, and authorizing the mayor to sign assignment and assumption of redevelopment agreement for assignment of redevelopment agreement from eighteen seventy-nine Morris Associates to four forty-one North Urban Renewal LLC.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
As Mr. Glacial noted, this, uh, provides, uh, uh, community benefit contribution to the borough for, uh, certain streetscape and pedestrian safety infrastructure improvements related to the project. Um, so this way, there's improvements to the streetscape, any pedestrian safety and traffic coming measures in the area that not only help the project, but also benefit the general community. Um, we do believe it's part of the developers' uh, corporate partnership, I guess you can say, to help the immediate area in need and make improvements, not just for themselves, but the community as a whole. Um, so, uh, they've been kind enough to negotiate this, and it is a, a, a community benefit donation that, uh, is specific to streetscape, pedestrian safety, which we know we both need in the downtown, so, um, that's what this resolution is for, is that amendment.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-two is conditionally designating Charles Fatchipanti as the redeveloper of certain property designated on the borough tax map as block thirty-four, lot twenty-eight, more commonly known as six twenty Bound Brook Road, and authorizing entry of interim cost agreement.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
So what an interim cost agreement is, is you have an interested party who wants to develop their property, or developer has bought a property, wants to develop it. This is, uh, Mr. Fatchipanti, he is a longstanding, um, business owner and property owner in Dunellen, has family in Dunellen, who wants to develop his property at the location noted. Um, so this, uh, for those that are, don't know what an interim cost agreement is, basically sets up the structure for him to put into escrow funds and, uh, indicate that he wants to be designated developer of his property, so he can develop it. And so therefore, the escrows cover the professional service costs that are in process of coming up with a project that makes sense and adheres to our redevelopment plan, um, before formal redevelopment agreement and presentation are made before council, so, um, that's what this is.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-three is to authorize a chapter one fifty-nine for pedestrian, pedestrian safety enforcement and education fund.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Um, Mr. Miller, or Mr. Scott, or Lieutenant yourself too, if you want to address this, I know this is a, a grant that was provided um, by the state that I believe Sergeant Delbuno applied for, that's gonna go to, uh, as it noted, uh, pedestrian safety and traffic safety enforcement, so, um, anything else you want to add before council takes a vote? Okay.
All right, take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number two seventy-four is authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for planning services to address affordable housing in the borough.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
So, this is re, um, Harbor is our alternate municipal planner, um, with the transition from Dan to T and M. Um, we are working now with Harbor, um, I guess assuming beyond our spending plan presentation. Um, we're gonna work with Harbor for the affordable housing elements moving forward, um, on compliance matters and ordinances that might need to be drafted related to that before the end of the year. So, that is why this is in place. Um, so, this way, we can have a consistent planner. That's probably the best way I can put it.
No questions? Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark?
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-five is granting approval to the Dunellen Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission for the Adams Theater Company to produce plays in the park.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund.
Okay.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay, item number seven is our council reports. Um, Councilwoman Albertson.
Okay. I want to give a shout out to Alex Miller, Mayor Solento, Rich, and the DPW employees, Dunellen Fire Department, Police Department, Rescue Squad, and the Office of Emergency Management, uh, for the quick response and hard work these past few days. The Fire Department had responded to thirty-two calls, apps for service in June, and they have a total number of calls, or two, twenty twenty-five of a hundred and eighty-eight. They had a hazmat call for, uh, five, had five hazmat calls, twelve false alarms, four service calls, two EMS calls, six good intent calls, three fire calls, so brings it to a monthly total of thirty-two. In addition to emergency responses, the Fire Department has attended several events and held several drills. So, on six five and eighteen, the probationary members continued in health training. Um, and on six six, they supported the Dunellen Police and raised the flag for the torch front. They held a monthly meeting on monthly office work drill, officer drill on six nine, on six twelve, they attended the bike rodeo at Faber. On six eighteen, they had a monthly instruction drill with the SCBA fit testing. On six twenty-one, they held their biannual street fair, and on six twenty-five, they had a meeting, the monthly meeting. Um, they're happy to have a number of new residents continuing to join, and, um, they invite people to come and join them. Uh, the new members are attending fire school right now, and if membership is open to everyone, six eighteen is a junior member, and full member is open to anyone over eighteen, visit their website, www.dunellenfd.com, or email join, join, at the, D F D at dunellenfd.com for more information. Um, while they did do quite a few calls in June, they have already exceeded that number this week. Um, operating, they started operating their apparatus, uh, six P M on seven three and through the weekend. Um, so between seven three and seven five, they responded to sixty-one emergency incidents. Uh, thank you all for what you've done and, uh, continue to do. Uh, in regards to the storm, if your American flag has been rendered unusable due to the damage from the storm, or if it's just unusable and you'd like to get rid of it, please drop it off at the American Legion. Um, and they will ensure that it is properly disposed of. A flag can be dropped off in the building if someone's there, or on the front porch, there's a table there. Um, and I'd like to give a shout out to Dunellen Municipal Alliance, because they held their annual leadership academy on June twenty-fourth. They had thirty high school students participating in team building activities and leadership training. Um, Community Resource Officer Condit came and spent some time with them, the students, and interacted with them. It was a very. interacted with them. It was a very rewarding experience for everyone. So look forward to seeing everyone at National Night Out when you'll get to meet some of these students when they're worked. Thank you.
That it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Rios.
I didn't think I had one, but Danellen Public Library. Don't forget to register for our summer reading event. Registration may be done by contacting us by email or visiting us in person. Also log into our website and check out our Facebook for great programs this summer. Buildings and ground report, the following parks had trees damaged to the July third storm. Columbia Park had two trees, McCoy Park had eight trees, Moorcraft had two trees, Gavornik Park had one tree, Washington Park had four trees. Public Works will be addressing these issues over the next week. And a side note, let me hope Outreach Church will be having their food drive giveaway this Saturday at eleven A M. while supplies last. This event happens every second Saturday of the month. The church is located at two oh one Whittier Avenue in Danellen. Please bring your own bags. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Scott?
For DPW, they continue to routinely clean the downtown area and all parks and properties. Weekly lawn and landscape maintenance for the borough parks and properties, maintain the ball fields, and they ran cardboard to the dump. And like everybody else, on the third, they had a nice busy day and continue through today. A crew was called in to help with road clearance after the storm and worked late into the evening. They continued to work on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the fourth through the sixth. They collaborated with the crews from Rich's Tree Service, clear as many trees out of the way as possible, enabling P S E and G to access and start repairs of the utility lines. And the crew has been working tirelessly through the storm, and we're all grateful for their service. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Lance?
From the Recreation Department. Summer camp is in full swing. Right now, they have fifty children registered. Registration is open and ongoing, but you must register three business days prior to the start date. Campers so far have enjoyed a welcome luau, a Fourth of July barbecue, and a trip to the Jersey Shore where they visited Jangensen's Aquarium, the boardwalk, and the beach. Campers will be heading to the water park later this week. If anyone is interested in continuing to join, they can email the rec program coordinator, Kelly Cedar, at kcedar@danellenborough.com. On Thursday, June twenty-six, recreation spring players enjoyed rec night at the ballpark at the Somerset Patriot Stadium. Players and coaches got to walk on the field prior to first pitch for a pregame parade and enjoyed fireworks after the game. Fall soccer registration will be opening up soon for pre-K through eighth grade. Last year, we had a record turnout. Keep your eye, keep your eye out for more soccer information. In the meantime, we are looking for volunteer coaches. So if you're interested in coaching this upcoming season, please contact again rec program coordinator, Kelly Cedar, at kcedar@danellenborough.com. And the Recreation Department also looks forward to helping the Police Department on National Night Out on August fifth.
Okay, thank you. Council President Segman?
Yes, I have been noticing a lot of those slowdowns. This is not our racetrack signs around town. It is exciting to see some of our work come to fruition throughout the borough. Also, heard a report back from Rome Pizza that they have started seeing the participants of the Walk to School Wednesday program come in and redeem their certificate for a slice and a soda. Also want to add my name to the long list of people thanking Alex Miller and the DPW Police Department, Fire Department, Fire Department members, and and Mayor Solento for all their hard work that wild and crazy night a few days ago. It took a while, but it sounds like everyone's back to having their power. So thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Vandermark, anything to report on this evening?
I have nothing to report this tonight.
Okay. Good to hear you, my friend.
I should be back in chambers next, next month.
Forward to it. Okay, my report for the evening. Did a storm recap. DPW will continue cleanup throughout the rest of this month, so please bring the debris to the, of trees and stumps to the curb for collection. ASL recycling, ninety-five gallon automatic side load bins recycling have started being delivered today, well, the past several days actually, right? Okay. If you do not receive your bin, please contact Borough Hall, and the administrative assistant will keep a record of any missing bins to ensure that residents receive them. As a reminder, the bins cannot be used before August thirteenth recycling collection as the M C I A will still be using backload trucks until then, and we'll make sure we continue to update on social media as well as let's do a few e-notifies and email blasts just so everyone's on the same page. Second Street D O T project, the mill and pace phase of the project was scheduled to start today, however, due to the extensive tree damage from the July third storm, we're delaying the project to give our residents sufficient time to remove branches from the street, allowing our Public Works crew to remove them and prevent damage to the newly paved road. We should have a new scheduled date from C M E and the contractor, Crossroads Paving, within a week. So look out for that information. Notices were delivered to the doors?
Yes.
Okay, and when updates come, they'll also be sent out to door to door. New Jersey American Water Main, Water, New Jersey American Water Water Main Project. The Water Main has been installed on Lehigh Street. The next phase will be the installation of water services. New Jersey American Water has just started the Water Main installation on Walnut. They'll be replacing eighty-five-year-old eight-inch water mains with twelve-inch water mains. The Water, American Water, has begun work on Pulaski Street section to complete it before the school opens in September. Anyone who needs to go to Faber for summer program can use Pulaski Street to access Walnut Street and then proceeds onto High Street. Alex, I do have a question, well, a note. I had a few residents that live on Walnut that were informed, they were not, they were allowed out of their properties, but not allowed back in when they were notified that they'd be able to get in and out of their street to get to and from their homes. I just want to confirm residents are allowed to get access to and from their, their homes.
There, there, there's access.
Okay.
It's still open for the residents. Need to, and I'll make sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you, because that was my next, could you coordinate efforts and improve the communication between contractors and departments? So allowing residents to get there just because they were noticed that they can. So if they can't, they need appropriately noticed, but my understanding is they can, so let's make sure they can. A report from our engineer, C M E, the Washington Avenue Street Lighting project, a site meeting was held with P S E and G and the issues that were being viewed by P S E and G, like the down by Saint John's where they didn't want to place the streetlights. Well, they wanted to place the streetlights, but they didn't want to put conduit underneath the sidewalk. They wanted to remove these nicely well-established trees. That issue's been resolved, so the trees won't go and the lights will go up, correct? Okay, which is nice. And I know our Shetree Commission will very much appreciate that. So the, the engineers are requesting a schedule from the contractor for the commencement of work, which will be very nicely done. The Railroad Culvert project on South Ave, which I know is a long time coming project. We're working with the I Bank. They've requested that the engineering agreement be provided for that project, and C M E is preparing it. The Army Corps has confirmed that their model shows the downstream system will have the capacity to take the flows from the project once they have completed their construction. So basically, as we all remember from several meetings ago, project was stalled based upon that we got to the I Bank because with the Greenbrook flood control project happening along the Greenbrook on the north side of town, and us being close to that project after fifty years, C M E had to prove to the Army Corps that the water that would be flowing through the South Avenue Culvert would not be impacting greatly the Greenbrook flood control project once that's up and running. So a plan has been put in place that we can continue with construction of the project, but the culvert that we will be building, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, will be built, but it has to be shut until the Greenbrook flood control project is completed. So once that's completed, the project at the culvert can be opened up and everything can flow the way it's supposed to. Did I miss anything?
You're pretty, pretty. We have now mentioned one of the other parts.
Got it. Understood. So I think we may be seeing the light, and I hope I didn't jinx us on that one. Which one? I think it was nineteen ninety-nine, the culvert started. And then Greenbrook Flood was nineteen seventy-three. It's the year my mom graduated. So, you know, sorry, Mom, but it's been a while. So C M E continues to monitor the work being performed by Comcast, which several parts of the town are up and running. So that is good. C M E's requested that the status of the New Market Road and Walnut Street Intersection Project from the county, as you know, we are trying to work with the county to get a traffic light at Walnut and New Market. They say it qualifies. So they've requested that from the Board of Commissioners that adopted resolution to accept the design contract. Once the contract is executed, they will hold a design kickoff meeting, which they expect to occur hopefully later this summer, early fall. So getting closer to that, too. Second Street Phase Two field surveys have been performed, and the design of the project is underway. As we noted tonight, the following local aid applications have been submitted to the N J D O T for the municipal aid. Improvements of milling, partial reconstruction surfacing of portions of Second Street between North Washington and Jefferson, and other enhancements such as storm drainage, driveway reconstruction, restoration, et cetera, that C M E will be submitting on our behalf. Transit Village Grant, the project generally consists of installation decorative lighting along the first block of the streets intersecting North Avenue, State Highway Route twenty-eight, including Madison Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and Jackson Avenue, and including some sidewalk restoration and street trees. So that's nice. We love trees. Safe routes to transit. The project generally consists of improvements along New Market Road from South Washington Avenue to the shared municipal border with Piscataway, which includes the removal and replacement of existing deteriorated sidewalks, ADA ramp improvements, turf restoration, driveway apron restoration, and other related work. So hopefully we get that grant because we've got the South Washington Avenue sidewalk restoration grant, which would be nice because they'll have two main corridors connecting us to another municipality that needs access to our train station, plus the residents that we currently have. In effect, completing what they call the last half mile, I think they call it, of getting to a train station. So that's it from myself this evening. Let's head over to our department head reports. Legal, anything, Mr. Robertson? I guess for legal, no news is good news. Thank you. Clerk, Registrar's Office?
No reports tonight.
Thank you. Again, great job on the elections and how you handled everything with the moving around of, I said it the last time, but you deserve great kudos for how you handled it.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, DPW, Business Admin?
Message for, thank you very much for our you know, orange storm, you know, the nasty environment, but you see the good side of things, but the Fire Department working all night and everything, going home and being at home. You know, police department, all over the place. Homer, the other will be pretty on top of this bar, sure, they're on the scene. It's just, just in, it is a good thing to sleep. Message, I stepped up, held out the shelter, so if, you know, and then we were talking, we were talking, see, good part, and the whole while was going on, everybody left their homes and they have no power. Like no generator going on or whatever else. And also Billy was on vacation. No one knew it, but getting the mess without, the mayor and I probably counted the thousand track messes driven with them, so. You know, it starts right from the top, so. Good to see everybody really working and working. Public Works will continue picking up branches, at least really good. Residents, you know, if we probably clean up, it's almost like the height of situation. We'll be back. We understand there's more stuff to be picked out and all.
We got a great team. Good job, everyone. Lieutenant, anything from P D? You're yielding your time to Homer. O E M, Mr. Mosley? Oh, thanks.
So I like
You're a comedian now, too, huh?
Yes, why not? I like to echo the sentiment about the various departments. The P D Fire Department, D B W, the Rescue Squad. Did I miss anybody? Of course, O E M. One of the things that this provides an opportunity to do is to look at this situation because we actually did an exercise, a live exercise, and see how our, did we execute on our E O Ps, our emergency operation plans? There's always a need for improvement, but I think, and I'll be coming forth with some recommendations regarding that. Again, I would like to especially thank Bill Scott because he provided a command center and a E O C at his Fire Department. In fact, Bill took on the took on the action of actually recording the impacts to the town so that we had a better picture. So thank you for that, Bill. I mean, that's something that usually O E M would be involved in terms of getting the common situational picture. So again, it's very important that again, that we have some representations of departments at, at E O C, just for that very reason, so we could all look at the general conditions of the town. On, on, on some positive things, again, I'd like to especially thank Chuck Lopez, who was acting as Deputy Cert Coordinator. He mobilized our cert team. Denise Allen, Sharon Stewart, Ingrid Franco, as well as Chuck to man the shelter, and also the, the Rescue Squad, which kind of meditated till we got there. Also, I know it wasn't mentioned, but I'd like to mention the fact that, of course, Mayor, I thank you for your leadership, you and Alex. But I also like to mention the fact that the Carol Fund came through. The, my next door neighbor at one oh, one oh nine completely lost their house. There's a family of five, three children, cat and dog, and, and of course, the parents. The, the individual, the baby was basically, debris was taken off the baby. Luckily, God, you know, intervened on this because the baby just came away with a few scratches on his face.
I think.
However, this, this family is, especially the kids are, are, are especially traumatized because of the fact that they are special needs children. And one of the little boys keep on asking, when are we going home, Daddy? So, but Carol, Carol Fund, thank you, Terry. Carol Fund stepped up to that. We have some good news. Chuck Lopez has initiated a process based upon his presentations about cert that several, a number of residents have, has, have requested CPR training. So he's working with the library to see if we're gonna be doing that on August the sixth. So stay tuned for that. We also have two residents, as a result of Chuck Lopez again doing a presentation. We will have two residents that will be attending the Cert Basis Academy in Saraville. So that's good news because we always use more cert members. And I think that's my, my report, is that's my, my deputy here has everything to say. Okay, you know?
You're okay?
Yes. Okay, so again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Thank you for what you do. Rescue Squad, anything to report this evening?
On the June, we responded to thirty-one calls. One of those was for fire rehab, and we also in June had a bio impact drill. Two of those responded to were motor vehicle accidents, and also in town, the bike rodeo, the life of the graduation. Two of the calls we responded to were more vehicle accidents. We attended also in town, the bike rodeo, the life of the graduation, and the street fair. I am also happy to announce that our squad received funding from the Verizon Foundation, over the grant of one thousand five hundred dollars. And thanks to the very part of the debt of Federal Methodist Office. The State Department of Health has finally agreed that we have the volunteer EMT training fund back.
Very nice. Thank you. And Alex, you guys are staying in communication in terms of transition. Good, okay. Okey doke. I don't see any other department heads here. Can't hear from fire just yet. We heard from your report. At this moment in time, we'll open the floor. Item number ten on the agenda is public comments. We ask that those who are here in chambers or online, please state your name and address just so we don't cause confusion. I'll open the floor to people on, in chambers first. We ask that you please state your name and address. Without hearing that, we'll open the floor to the members joining us virtually. We ask that you please state your name and address and ask us your questions or make your statements. I will do one last general blanket for everyone who is here in chambers and online. Please state your name and address if you have any questions or statements. We're all ears. Okay, without hearing any from the public, we'll close that portion of the meeting. We're moving on to item number eleven on the agenda, which is Resolution two seventy-seven for adjournment. Before we motion in second, August fourth of two thousand twenty-five at seven PM is our next council meeting in these chambers, or you can join virtually. I hope people participate. So with that, can I have a motion in second on Resolution two seventy-seven? Move it, Sigmund. Second on Lance. All in favor? Any nays? I'm waiting for that nay.